Declare there is a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Action. First on the agenda is the presentation of 2016-2017 Financial Audit Report. Ms. Smith, you are recognized.
Good evening Chairman Ramsey, Dr. Ingram, and members of the board. You have been presented with a draft copy of the 2016-2017 Financial Audit Report. Our auditors from Elliott Davis are here to present the financials to you tonight. But before they come up, I'd like to thank our finance staff for being here and for all the hard work and dedication that they have done throughout this process. It's 9:42. I'd like to introduce Tim Groh and Ed Royal who will be doing their presentations this evening.
Dr. Ingram, board members. Thanks for having us this evening. My name is Tim Groh. I'm the audit partner in charge of the audit for the County School District for the year ended June 30, 2017. I have with me Ed Royal, who's senior manager, who led the charge on this audit. Before I get started, I guess I want to preface, this has been a longer process than we ordinarily have. Ordinarily, the school district financial statements are required to be issued to the State Department by December 1st of the year ended. In this case, June 30, 2017 should have been December 1st. Obviously, you're aware of some of the challenges this particular audit provided. And I'll give you some, I guess, some background. I think when I came and met with the committee initially, I think what I've told you is no matter what I tell you, I can, you'll never, I'm not going to make you feel a lot better about things. The results of this audit is not going to get your trust back. It's been violated and there's nothing as a result of this audit that's going to make you feel better about things. However, I can tell you this, the staff that you have in place right now, Dr. Ingram, Ms. Smith, Mr. Kane, everybody we've been dealing with the last several months have been very upfront, very vocal, very above board about everything we've asked. In other words, there's, typically when you're in situations like this, there's evasiveness or non-eagerness to disclose everything. We did not meet that at all. I think they were exhaustive in their search. They, quite frankly, they wanted us to bury everything. So we're here prepared to do that this evening. So I'm going to cover a couple of high-level things. Obviously, these numbers are nine months old and dated, so I won't focus too much on the numbers themselves. Ed, you want to go to the ... So with the audit for the district, to give you some perspective, some background on how we do this, we do what's called a risk-based audit. We assess the risks of the district as we see them during our planning stage. Obviously, this year was unusual in that we were, we were provided a lot of data regarding some of the errors and complications that had occurred. So that's really weighed heavily on our assessment of the risks and how we conducted our audit. But I did want to highlight, so the district's responsibility in this is effective internal control and accurate financial reporting. Our responsibility is to obtain reasonable evidence that the financial statements are free from material mistake. What essentially, we did, we did not audit every transaction. We developed a scope that we felt like was appropriate to assess what a decision-maker would, I guess, a level, a financial level that would cause them to change their mind about the financial statements. We issued three opinions, and of the three opinions, we're all unmodified. So the highest level assurance we can provide, essentially, your district staff provided us this draft financial report. We performed our procedures and we inserted three opinions and our findings in this, in this audit report. I do want to bring your attention on the financial statement opinion on page five of this report. One of the unusual things you're going to find in this audit, I, the very bottom paragraph of this report, there's a paragraph called "Misappropriation of Assets." This is the emphasis of the matter, and I'm going to read this. As discussed in Note 19 in the financial statements, during the year, it was discovered that the school district's chief financial officer had perpetrated fraud for several years using a variety of methods. As a result of the discovery, the former chief financial officer is under federal, state, and South Carolina indictments for these crimes. Management and legal counsel believe the effects of the fraud is accurately reflected in the financial statements. Nevertheless, because of the length of time the fraud occurred and the number of schemes involved, it is at least reasonably possible that other discoveries will occur. Additionally, the district has filed lawsuits to recover money related to the fraud. Currently, the likelihood of success in any related recoveries cannot be reasonably estimated. Our opinion is not modified with respect to this matter. What I'm, what I'm telling you is we are very comfortable with these financial statements as they're presented. However, as we continued down the path of getting this audit completed, things continued to get brought to our attention that could not be, or we couldn't reasonably explain. Now, we've got those reported as findings, and we feel like everything's captured, but it is a remote possibility that something may turn up in the future. We don't, we hope that that's not the case. We designed our procedures to avoid that if possible, but some of these, some of these, some of the things that were done are inexplicable, quite frankly. So we feel comfortable that the financial statements are fairly stated. However, there's a chance that we may, that something could turn up at some point. I did want to point out a couple of, just as a rule, we try to focus on some of the highlights for the school district. General fund is, is obviously the fund balance that typically a school board will focus on. The fund balance decreased, general fund fund balance decreased 8.8 million during the year to 43.3. Unassigned fund balance is 42.8, which is 16.3 percent of 2017 actual expenditures. The district has a fund balance policy requiring at least 15 percent of the annual operating budget, and the district is still above that threshold. As you can see based on this graph, revenues continue to increase slightly each year, but this year, unassigned fund balance did decrease. And there's actually a finding related to that that we'll talk about in a second. I did want to point out that GASB-68 was effective for fiscal year into '15. I know this was mentioned earlier this evening. Requires the district to report its proportionate share of the unfunded liability South Carol retirement system. The total unfunded liability for the entire system is approximately $21 billion. The district's debt pension liability is approximately $355 million, an increase of $34 million from the prior year. The net pension liability is reported on the government-wide financial statements only, and the district has no requirement to repay that debt. Quite frankly, they can't repay that debt. Now, I will tell you that certainly, I think it was mentioned earlier, that there are some of these costs are being passed along to the district, the increase in funding of the, of the pension liability. I think GASB's intention in doing this was to grab attention to people at the local level to remind them that certain municipalities, in this case, the state of South Carolina still has an unfunded pension liability. And to put the pressure at the local level, to put pressure at the state level to make sure that that funding gap is covered. So I guess I just continue to point out that that number, while it's not, it hasn't grown significantly, the state's net pension deficit, it still sits there, but its informational purposes only. I'm going to cover some of the findings. Before I cover the findings, I'll give you some, some scale to findings. Material weaknesses are the worst findings we can have. So material weaknesses are errors or problems so significant that if they're not corrected, they're likely going to lead to a misstatement of the financial statements. That's the most severe. This year, the district had four material weaknesses. If you're asking me, is that bad? Yes, that's bad. It's, it's very unusual for a district to have one material weakness, material weakness, let alone four material weaknesses. The second type of finding is what we call significant deficiencies. It's not as severe as material weakness. It may not directly lead to a material misstatement of the financial statements, but if it goes uncorrected, it could lead to material misstatements. The final type of finding is controlled deficiency. Those are, those are what we call management recommendations for improvement. We're not going to focus on material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. If you have your draft report in your hand, those start on page 67, no, 123, I'm sorry. The first finding I mentioned earlier, misappropriation of assets. The condition, internal control should be in place to prevent and detect misappropriation of assets by a member of management. It was discovered that the school district's former chief financial officer had misappropriated school district assets for several years. The known fraud is approximately $800,000 and occurred over several years. The school district has misstated, the effect of this is the school district has misstated its financial statements for several years. The controls in place at the school district were not sufficient to prevent and detect misappropriation, misappropriation of assets by a member of management. Certainly, we, we discuss that with management, management's response. Management agrees with the recommendation. Action has been taken on the recommendation with regard to instituted controls, including but not limited to hiring a new superintendent, hiring a new chief financial officer, hiring an internal auditor, and the implementation of a new board committee structure, including finance and human resources committee to promote stronger governance and oversee all district funds. The second material weakness, internal control should be in place to ensure that the school district's bond proceeds are reported in the appropriate fund. During the year ended June 30, 2017, the school district identified that approximately $12 million in bond premiums related to bond referendum proceeds had been recorded in a non-referendum bond fund. This leaves the potential for inaccurate information being presented to school district stakeholders. Controls were not in place to adequately ensure that adjustments were reviewed and recorded Management agrees with the recommendation. The district now requires a two-signature approval for all budget changes and general entries. In addition, the district's implementing a new accounting software system to streamline processes that will result in more efficiency and accountability. Third material weakness, taxable bond issuance. Internal control should be in place to ensure that the school district's bond issuances occur on a timely basis to ensure the issuances are the most advantageous for the school district. During the year ended June 30, 2017, the school district issued bonds that were taxable. Had the school district issued these bonds in the appropriate timeframe, the bonds would have been non-taxable. The taxable bond issue will result in the net cost of the school district approximately $1 million over the life of the bonds.
What page are you referring to?
This is page 124. Management, control should be in place, were not adequate to ensure that the school district's bond issuance would qualify as tax exempt. Management agrees with the recommendation. The chief financial officer, bond counsel, general counsel, and financial advisors are meeting regularly to proactively plan for the issuance of bonds. Material weakness number four, utilization of restricted funds. Internal control should be in place to ensure that the district's funds restricted for acquisition of equipment are used only for their restricted purpose. During the year, the school district identified that restricted funds were improperly transferred to the general fund and used to fund operations. The, the school district overstated its fund balance in the general fund by $13 million and improperly utilized funds acquired through a bond issuance. Controls were not in place to ensure that school district's restricted funds were used We recommend that the school district institute process and controls that will ensure the restricted funds are reported appropriately and only used for the restricted purpose. Management agrees with the recommendation. The district has implemented procedures requiring dual signatures on funds acquired through a bond issuance. This, this reclassification of these bond proceeds or the fund balance out of the general fund back to the capital projects fund is why general fund fund balance went down as much as it did. Significant deficiencies, as I, as I said before, the first four material weaknesses, the most severe of the controlled deficiencies we find. These following deficiencies are what we call significant deficiencies, not as severe as, as material weaknesses, but still significant enough that they need to be addressed. Health insurance payments. Internal control should be in place to ensure that the school district's withholdings from employees are sufficient to pay the employee portion of the school district's required payments to the state of South Carolina health insurance plan. During the year, the school district's finance department identified that amounts withheld for the employer's portion of health insurance was significantly less than the employee's portion paid to the state of South Carolina health insurance plan. This resulted in $450,000 of employee portion of health insurance in excess of the amounts withheld from employees. We recommend that the school district continue institute processes and controls that will aid in reconciling health insurance withholdings to the amount owed to the state of South Carolina health insurance plan. Management agrees with the recommendation. A new reconciliation process is currently being implemented that will aid in reconciling health insurance withholding to the amount owed to the state of South Carolina. Payroll-related accruals. Internal control should be in place to ensure that the school district's payroll accruals are accurately reflected. During the audit, it was identified that several adjustments were necessary to accurately reflect payroll-related accruals. Certain accruals related to payroll and holdings were not recorded correctly June 30, 2017, resulting in approximately a $1 million adjustment to payroll accruals. Management agrees with our recommendation that, that controls be instituted to accurately record accruals at year end. A new process is currently being implemented that will aid in the accurate reporting of accruals. In addition, the implementation of a new accounting software system will aid in streamlining this process. When we started our planning portion of this audit, one thing we felt that it was incumbent to do was have our IT auditor come evaluate the controls, and we did have our IT auditor come on-site. As a result of this, we have the third significant deficiency. Internal control should be in place to ensure that access to electronic payroll processing files is limited to authorized employees only. During the audit, it was identified that the school district did not have proper controls around payroll processes. User review process, a user review process is not in place to, place over users with privileged access to the accounting system and network. Users could retain access post-termination and make system or financial changes. Users could have access that exceeds what is required for their job. Password settings, password settings in place open the systems up to risk of fraudulent users gaining access to the system through illegitimate means. Account privilege and access, users have access to the system above the access level they should have, resulting in the ability for unauthorized users to make changes to the financial statement system. Change management, no tracking of changes made to the payroll system exists. Changes can be made that would interrupt the operation of the school district with no evidence available as to which employees made the change. Controls in place are currently not adequate around the aforementioned payroll-related processes. We recommend that the school district institute necessary processes. Management agrees with the recommendation. A new process has been implemented to include internal controls for payroll and a new review process for users with privileged access to the accounting system and network. Account access has been changed or revoked for employees with access higher than what is required for their job. The implementation of the new accounting software will also aid in the change management process while permitting the district to track all changes in the payroll system. The final finding is a compliance finding over the bus driver testing. The state of South Carolina has a couple of very specific tests that we must implement, and the number of bus drivers that were required to be tested were not, that was not met. I think 8.3 percent of school bus drivers were tested, which was less than the 10 percent that were required. I guess I want to follow this up by saying, you have a chief financial officer that had the ability to circumvent the system internal control. You have to have somebody in place that, that is the highest level of ethics and you can count on. There is no system in place that could, would be able to prevent or detect a lot of this stuff for a certain amount of time. It's, it's unfortunate that the person with this access perpetrated several of the things that, that he did. Some of the things, quite frankly, it appears to, and I'm hesitant from speculating, I know there's been a fair amount of that. But you, you have to have that person in place to ensure that you're getting accurate information from which to make decisions from. Clearly, that had not happened in several instances. What my takeaway from this is, your current management has eagerly awaited the results of this audit and been heavily involved in helping us discover a lot of this. So they'd give us a string and we tug on it. We'd come back with questions, they'd dig some more, and they were very above board about these findings. So I feel like appropriate controls are now in place. What will happen next is we will certainly, because of the delay in getting this issued, we're almost getting ready to start the next year's audit. So we will have some firsthand knowledge to make sure to test the implementation of these controls to ensure that they don't happen going forward. So I know that's a lot to digest. I'm going to pause there for questions, I'm sure, but I'm going to pause.
So you're saying some of the problems from our former CFO action is ongoing, you're still finding new materials that he may have misused, mismanaged, or whatever?
We feel like everything that has been happened has been captured and corrected. That's, we believe that. There is always the chance because of how, the position he was in and the, the number of schemes involved, there's always a possibility that something else will be discovered. We consider that to be remote. However, my years of experience taught me never to be completely 100 percent sure because this is somebody who had the ability to do this for several years. So the severity of this, depending on how far back you go, you may continue to find other things. But we feel like the financial statements currently are fairly stated. We feel like the material weaknesses that we've identified have all been addressed, as well as significant deficiencies.
You list a few recommendations. All of those have been made or implemented?
Yes, sir, they have. All eagerly been, been met.
The software implementation as well?
Currently, Ashley, I think that's in process, but yes. But to follow up on that, one thing we will do, so we did not audit management's response to our findings. That was, but what we, since we've identified a weakness, certainly, that's going to create a doubt for us or a risk for us in the next fiscal year. So we will be testing these things to ensure that they're implemented.
How often will you be testing?
The annual audit happens annually.
Oh, annually?
Yes. Now, could we, could we come in and, my suspicion?
Spot check?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fairly certain Ashley will welcome that. So we haven't discussed that. We were, quite frankly, this is, we were trying to get to this point and then start developing the plan moving forward. We were trying to get all the dirty laundry out now so we can move forward.
Well, I think we ought to have some spot checking, not just annually, because folk, you know.
Reference me, and we do also now employ an internal auditor. So we have someone on staff.
I'm sorry, say it again?
We employ an internal auditor as well, which is a new, a new position that Ashley's brought in. So we are spot checking. I'm, I'm sure we're going to engage additional professionals too, but we have somebody on staff now. Yep.
Can I say this, that our internal auditor does not look to me, unfortunately, the citizens, and it's going to be all to me, unfortunately, to you, Ashley.
So the flexibility that provides you is if there are worries, there are concerns, there are doubts, there are places you want somebody to go kick the tires, you have an internal auditor who can develop a program, a set of procedures around your concerns. That's it.
Well, I'm not being picky or anything, but the last person was on staff. You know, I'm just saying, we ought to be some check coming in from outside of staff.
Yes, yes. They're going to be here every year as well. Well, for a couple of years.
That's right.
I mean, I'm just thinking.
And we'll change them out. I do have a question. I was prepared for everything that you said, except the bus driver alcohol testing. That kind of blew me out of the water. That feels like a very low hurdle to, to clear. Have you ever seen that fail before?
Well, I guess, let me use some scales. So the state of South Carolina has, and I actually have it on the next slide, they have a couple of very specific, what we call compliance finding, compliance things to test. These are not, these are, the state requires that 10 percent, I think it's 10 percent of your bus drivers be tested annually for drug and alcohol. And there's a couple of other parameters. Occasionally, I think in the selection process this year, they selected some drivers that were no longer employees of the district, and there were no replacements picked. So it's, it's a threshold, so it's a, it's a compliance finding, it's not a, like a financial statement finding. So it's, it's, the state required this level of testing to, to occur. You have a contract to have that achieved. There was a, there was a miss this year, and that's been addressed with that service provider to make sure that that doesn't happen going forward. Have I ever seen that finding before? Yes, I have seen that before, and it's, it's usually addressed very quickly. Did that answer your question? Okay.
I guess, and the other is just a statement, and I know Ashley's coming up next, but I mean, now's the hard part. How do you get the fund balance back up? How do you get us back on track? How do we get from where we are to where we need to go? Because we are a big, growing, busy place who are missing money out of our fund balance.
So I'll, a couple, one other thing I wanted to mention, there was a new tax abatement disclosure required this year, GASB-77. It requires the district to highlight the amounts of abated tax revenues in each fiscal year. The total of baited revenues for fiscal year '17 were $43.5 million. Primary abatement types for the district were special source revenue credit, fee in lieu of taxes, and multi-county business park. That disclosure, you didn't forego any taxes, it's just an additional disclosure that's required this year. Because of significance, I felt compelled to share that with you. Additionally, the state required, had two additional procedures that they wanted us deploy this year, and we, we did perform both of those procedures with no findings.
This audit was this fiscal year?
For June 30, 2017. Fiscal year ended June 30, 2017. So that this report is nine months removed.
So you, you have no knowledge of any issues that were in the mix prior to that fiscal year? In other words, what I'm asking, is there any way that you can determine, I know there's a distinction between embezzled funds and misappropriated funds. Have you made any of those distinctions?
We haven't discovered anything other than what's been reported to the school board already. Remember, the, the period under audit was for the year ended June 30, 2017. We did not extend our procedures beyond that.
Okay. I do have a concern about the fund balance at 16.3 percent, I think, 43-point-something million dollars fund balance. And we will be in some difficulty in terms of bond issuance and, and borrowing money if this goes below 15 percent. Is that correct?
Well, I'll tell you, that's a, that's a judgment call. I will tell you that the G, the Government Finance Officer Association recommends a minimum of 60 days worth of general fund, fund balance, general fund expenditure is fund balance. So I think your 15 percent is probably what we consider an adequate fund balance, but the, the more fund balance you have available to you certainly looks good to the bond rating agencies. Now, I know the district, that employees, people dedicated to providing guidance surround that, I can tell you that it's adequate from, from an audit perspective, from a recommended sources that we polled. How it'll affect bond, any bonds over, if you're over-capitalized in your own fund, fund balance, that's probably for your bond attorney to give his opinion on that.
Do you foresee anything that you've uncovered that could jeopardize the 15 percent, that could possibly go below the 15 percent capacity?
Nothing we've become aware of, other than the reclassification that took place out of the general fund fund balance back in the capital projects fund. Even with that, I think at first, we were worried that that might push us below the 15 percent, but as it turns out, it didn't. So we are close to that level, but we are not below that level currently.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? We appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Second agenda item is any action as required as a result of the audit presentation. Ms. Smith, you are recognized again.
Good evening again, and as your question was stating, where do we start? Where we've come, we've implemented some new processes within the district, and this evening, I wanted to bring up another item. As a result of the audit presentation, in an effort to begin cost savings, management is recommending a reduction in employee and board member travel to take effect immediately. New guidelines will include, in-state travel must have the prior approval of the chief finance officer, the superintendent, and must be related to credentialing or an educational mission consistent with the district's strategic plan. Out-of-state travel must have the prior approval of the chief finance officer, superintendent, and board, and must be related to credentialing or an educational mission consistent with the district's strategic plan. Travel will be limited to no more than two employees traveling to the same location. For grants, state, local, and federal, with travel planned within specific grant guidelines and/or required for grant funding, travel may be continued as specified within the government. guidelines of the grant, but must follow the same in-state and out-of-state guidelines for approval. Management is asking for a motion to accept the new guidelines on the travel policy as presented.
Do we have a motion?
A move to reduce employee and board travel to include new guidelines as presented by Ms. Smith.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. When you say reduce, what actually does that mean? You reducing to what amount?
We're just trying to limit travel at this time, just to make sure everybody step back and not send, you know, four to six people to the same conference, so if we send two people, they can come back and discuss what was learned at the conference.
Are we jeopardizing our investing in personnel to, and not align them to be educated on some of the things that they are educated on when they make these travels? Because I believe some of these are workshop and those kind of thing.
Absolutely, and I understand, and that's why we wanted to limit it to two people, so they can come back and educate the rest of the staff. So, we're not limiting travel altogether, it's only to limit a certain amount of people to go so that they can educate their staff when they return.
My concern with personnel is that most of the time, the teachers, bus drivers, and custodians are the one who are hit the hardest when we start cutting back. And, you know, we spend gobs of funds on fences and pavements and other things, and I think we should invest in our personnel as much as we invest in buildings and other things, you know, temporal things. Personnel should be at one of the top of our, on our list as far as investment. I have a concern when we start cutting some of these areas.
Well, and I, I don't, you're not going to cut credentialing, and you're not going to cut things that are required for development. Just trying to limit our scope to make sure that we're spending any extra very, very wisely. And sometimes we travel multiple people to the same location, and that does give you different perspectives, but there's a lot of cost associated with it, hotels and flights and things like that. It's not limiting-
Right, we're not trying to limit-
I don't want to sound redundant and go back over some of the things that we discussed earlier, but I remember redoing sidewalks for like $10,000 and fences, I mean, you know. I think the intelligence of our county based on our personnel is more important than some of the other things that we are spending. That's just my concern.
What I would say Reverend Spann is speak more to the parties within the district that can get us that information, and then get back with me before the second reading, and if, then we can discuss it some more, because this is the first reading, we're going to, and if it gets approved, then we'll move forward. But understand, before we have the second reading, if we need to have some more discussions within the committee-
I believe we do.
All right, well, just, I just want to put that out there to make sure that we have those discussions, so that when we do have the second reading, we'll feel secure and positive about what we're doing.
I just wanted to go on record that I just approve of what you got.
Well, and I, I mean, I don't think it's, it doesn't say you can't go, it just, we need to be real sure that it's meeting our educational need before we're spending the money.
Well, she's, Ms. Smith, I appreciate your explanation. I understand what you're saying quite well.
I do have a question.
Let me just chime in a little bit. There's a meeting that took place the last two or three days in Charleston that doesn't always take place in Charleston, it takes place in Greenville and Columbia, in which all of the high school principals and all of the high school athletic directors are required by the high school lead to attend. So, if we are going to get into this quagmire of saying only two people can attend a particular event, and it has to be approved by the CFO and the superintendent, I'd take exception to that. I don't think that's good business. The board has a travel budget, I haven't spent a dime on the travel budget except to go to Charleston, and that was for 32 miles for gas reimbursement. But, I don't, if the board has a budget and it's approved by the board, why do we have to have the superintendent and the CFO approve our travel? Just saying, it doesn't sound right to me. We're the Board of Trustees, and if we are going to limit two people, what about the SCASA? What about the South Carolina School Boards Association meetings? What about the South Carolina Association of School Administrators in Myrtle Beach every year? That's going to be something which two people can go from the county and go back and tell 400 administrators? Doesn't sound plausible to me. I realize we're trying to save money, but I think we need to look at what we're actually trying to approve before we do it.
I think, given the fact that we have very prudent administrators such as Dr. Ingram and Ms. Smith, I think that they can make very prudent decisions when it comes to what would be appropriate and what would not be appropriate. And I trust their abilities to make that judgment. I don't have a problem with it being limited. I think we do need to limit some of our expenses and some of our expenditures. And I think, given their expertise and their knowledge and their ability to be able to make prudent decisions, I trust their decisions.
I do have a question about travel. Will this affect how some of our, some of our schools have been invited, our programs have been invited to travel, both in the state and in different places in the country? Will that affect this? Because sometimes they take more than two teachers.
If you're using them as chaperones, then I'm sure that they would need to go, as far as the travel is concerned, because you'd have to have the appropriate amount of chaperones for your trip.
So, this doesn't affect that?
It would still need to go through the approval process as far as in-state and out-of-state travel, but we would take that in consideration.
Okay. I just don't want to deny our programs from the experience and from the honor of some of these invitations, just because we're trying to cut travel.
Any more discussion? I'll call the question then. All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, respond by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, two to one. Third on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of general obligation bonds to make acquisition payments for safe bonds and special obligation bonds. Ms. Smith, you are recognized again.
I have before you a resolution for the board to provide the issuance and sale of a general obligation bond of the school district in the principal amount of not exceeding $6 million, of which the proceeds will be used for the purpose of paying the March 15, 2018 acquisition payments for the Safe Installment Purchase Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2013A, B, C, and D, and the Safe Installment Purchase Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2015A, paying the May 15, 2018 special obligation bond acquisition payment, paying the cost of issuance of the bond and such other lawful purposes as the board may determine. Management is requesting a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a not exceeding $6 million general obligation bond, Series 2018A, to make acquisition payments for the safe bonds and special obligation bonds.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a not exceeding $6 million general obligation bond, Series 2018A, to make acquisition payments for the safe bonds and special obligation bonds.
We have a motion by Ms. Watford, and a second by me. Do we have any discussion?
So, this will basically pay the bills.
That's why I'm standing here. Okay, we will now call the question. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, three to zero. Next on the agenda is the financial update. Ms. Smith, you are recognized again.
Okay, I'll be presenting the budget updates for this portion of the meeting. Of our $278 million in budgeted revenue and expenditures, we have received $165 million in revenues and have expended $137 million. During this time of the year, our general fund budget revenues are steady. As you see, we've received $53 million in local revenue, which included $28.6 million in tax levies for the month of December, and also a January advance of $25 million, bringing us to a total year-to-date local revenue of $69.8 million. For year-to-date expenditures of $137.4 million, 82% of the expenditures include salaries and benefits, and approximately 12% was spent on purchase services, including Kelly Services, technology, and travel. The special revenue fund budget has received a total of $9.3 million from state and local funding, and has expenditures of $12.9 million. The majority of the funding is for salaries and benefits. The EIA budget has received $12.6 million from state sources with total expenditures of $8.3 million. 48% of the expenditures are in salaries and benefits. The year-to-date total in January for expenditures in the capital projects fund totaled $13.9 million. This was mostly spent on purchase services, supplies and materials, and capital outlay for ongoing projects throughout the district. During the month of January, $3.2 million was spent on capital outlay in the bond referendum account, bringing the total expenditures to $59.9 million year-to-date as of January 31, 2018. The child nutrition budget is showing $1.4 million in local revenue and $6 million in federal revenue, with expenditures totaling $9 million year-to-date. The majority of expenditures are supplies and materials at over 50%, and approximately 39% was spent on salaries and benefits. All budgets presented this evening are in good standing as of January 31, 2018.
Any discussion? Okay, on to the next agenda item is governor's proclamation of March 2018 as purchasing month. Ms. Smith, you are recognized again.
I'm going to invite our director of procurement, Marcy Abrahamson, to discuss the proclamation.
Good evening, Madam Chairman Watford, and Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Ramsey, Director Ingram, and distinguished members of the board. March has been spotlighted as, has been, has taken the opportunity to spotlight March as procurement profession and its impact on its role within each organization. Governor McMaster has taken on the proclamation and designated March National Procurement Month. Believe it or not, procurement's been around for a long time, it's actually been around since the pyramids in 3000 B.C. There is evidence that they scribes marked material management on papyrus poles as they were building those pyramids to keep up with their materials. The profession has changed significantly since that time, and we, in the last 30 years, significant changes were made after the Model Procurement Code was established and the desire for ethical and transparent procurement practices, because we are using taxpayer funds as a government agency. During this time, we've moved from kind of a clerical role, I think there was always, there's always a misconception that purchasing is buying stuff. It's really a lot more complex than that. As a government procurement professional, you're required to uphold the statutes given to you through the procurement code, and of course, those adopted by your agency. Since taking over the position as the lead procurement in 2013, my vision's always been to continue the evolution within Berkeley County School District, to conduct not only ethical practices, but to get the best quality goods at the best price at the right time to continue district operations, and to be cognizant of tapping your money as if it were my own, because it is my own. So, we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize not only procurement as a profession, but also the procurement team within Berkeley County School District, which is Ashley Cash, Construction Procurement, she's here tonight. Other members could not be here tonight, but they are Stephanie Stevenson, she's our procurement specialist, Karen Taylor, procurement specialist, and Sherry Mearon-Jelly, our procurement card specialist. Each of these people contribute every day to support our end-users and our board and our cabinet members, to ensure that they have the quality goods that they need to run our school district and to be there for our students. Tonight, we've given each of you a bag of gold coins to represent our desire to be a strategic partner and to continue to promote ethical and, I'm sorry, ethical standards within the procurement department, and to also be a strategic partner when it comes to meeting budgets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell me why is March purchasing month again? I missed it.
Actually, it was designated as purchasing month about 20 years ago by the National Institute of Government Purchasing, and since that time, several states and local agencies have taken on that proclamation. And Governor Nikki Haley was actually the one that first instituted it within the state of South Carolina, and Governor McMaster has continued that trend within South Carolina, because we have recognized the need to promote the procurement profession, because honestly, we are the gatekeepers, and we wear many hats within our agencies, and from being legal representation, contract administrators, sometimes mind readers, technical writers, and just the importance of conducting fair and ethical treatment, not only for our agency, but also the vendor community.
So, if you purchase anything in the month of March, do you get a write-off or anything?
Unfortunately, they don't give us discounts, but, well, we do our best to make sure we seek out those discounts to make sure we're getting that when we do purchase on your behalf.
I know, I really appreciate, Marcy, whenever I have a question and I give you a call, and you either got the answer or you get the answer really quickly. So, with me being on the board a year, year and a half, you've been really helpful to me, and you and your staff, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do appreciate this board's support of procurement. We haven't had that backing in a long time, and it means a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda is RFP 527-17-18, Upgrade Network Switching and Expand Wireless at Seven Locations. Ms. Smith, you are recognized again.
Thank you. RFP 527-17-18 was conducted to upgrade the network switches and expand the wireless capacity for Berkeley High, Berkeley Middle, College Park Middle, Hanahan Elementary, Hanahan High, Hanahan Middle, and Sedgfield Middle, to facilitate the district's one-to-one technology initiative. The district will be applying for E-Rate funding for this work. E-Rate is a federally funded program derived from the Telecommunications Act of 1996 to ensure that schools and libraries have affordable access to telecommunications services, including internet access. The district is required to compete the services for a minimum of 28 days on the program administrator's website prior to the application's deadline. In January, the district was notified that the E-Rate deadline was March 22, 2018. The district has made final award contingent upon securing appropriate E-Rate funding approval. Administration is asking for a motion for the Finance Committee to approve RFP 527-17-18 to upgrade switching and expand wireless at seven locations to DISYS Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $795,080.92, with the understanding that the purchase is contingent upon receiving approval for E-Rate funding for the 1819 funding year.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion to approve RFP number 527-17-18 to upgrade switching and expand wireless at seven locations to DISYS Solution Incorporated in the amount of $795,080.92, contingent upon receiving approval of E-Rating funding for 2018 and 2019.
2019 funding year.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, and it's by Reverend Spann, and a second by Ms. Watford. First of all, a little bit of discussion. I had, saw the big number on this. It's like over $700,000. And I wondered, you know, as far as where we were as a district, is our finances, you know, is this something that we really need? The schools where this, where we're asking to get this done, are schools that we do really need it for what we're trying to do to educate our children. And secondly, about two-thirds of it, we're trying to get a grant for. So it's, it makes sense on all levels. This is something that we want to spend our money on. So again, thank you, Marcy, for giving me the info on that. Now I will call the question unless we have any further discussion.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
What are the seven schools?
Berkeley High, Berkeley Middle, College Park Middle, Hannah Hand Elementary, Hannah Hand High, Hannah Hand Middle, and Sedgfield Middle.
Any more questions? Okay. I will call the question. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, respond by saying nay. The ayes have it, three to nothing. Next on the agenda is RFP 528-17-18, Expand Wireless Capabilities at Six Locations. Ms. Smith, you are recognized again.
RFP 528-17-18 was conducted to expand wireless capacity for Payne-Hoy Elementary, Cross Elementary, Cross High, J.K. Gordon, St. Stevens Elementary, and St. Stevens Middle to facilitate the district's one-to-one technology initiative. The district will be applying for E-Rate funding for this work. The district has made final award contingent upon securing appropriate E-Rate funding approval. Administration is requesting a motion for the Finance Committee to approve RFP 528-17-18 to expand wireless capabilities at six locations to DISYS Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $316,552.54, with the understanding that the purchase is contingent upon receiving approval for E-Rate funding for the 2018-19 funding year.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve RFP number 528-17-18 to expand wireless capability at six location to DISYS Solution Incorporated in the amount of $316,522.54, contingent upon receiving approval of E-Rate funding for 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
We have a motion by Reverend Spann, and a second by Ms. Watford. Do we have any more discussion? Okay. I will call the question. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, respond by saying nay. The ayes have it, three to nothing. The motion is approved. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting...
So moved.
...so that the facilities and capital planning committee meeting can begin.
Second.
All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.